Twenty-three to order. Mary Lee, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Powers?
Here.
Luttrell?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Bywellton?
Seven.
Here.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is appreciated. There were a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities have been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time a public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign-up sheet has been provided as you enter council chambers for those individuals desiring to address city council during their appearance of citizens on our agenda. I'd like to ask Chief Carrier to lead us in our invocation, and followed by the invocation, I'd like Councilman Luttrell to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, and we just thank you, Lord, for the many, many blessings you've poured out upon each and every one of us, Lord. We thank you for the fact that we live in a free country tonight, and what we've celebrated just this past week, our independence and our freedom. And we thank you, Lord, for all those down through the years who have made sacrifices to provide those freedoms. And we thank you, Lord, for your Son, Jesus, who made the greatest sacrifice to give us the freedom from sin and to give us, Lord, that direct access to you. Tonight, Lord, as we come before you, I pray for this city council, this mayor and council. And I ask, dear God, that you would just bless them tonight with your wisdom as they make decisions to lead our city. And pray, Lord, you would just give them that wisdom that they need and help them, Lord, to be able to address each of the items that they have on the agenda tonight and look at those and make decisions that would better the community and better each person here and move the city of Bristol forward. We thank you, Lord, for the fact that these council people are willing to serve in this mayor. And, Lord, we just pray for them tonight, and we ask the Lord that you would just make your presence known in this building and give us a spirit of love and a spirit of cooperation. And we pray all these things in the holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thanks, flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ms. Porzal, do we have any additions this evening?
We do not.
All right. We have one proclamation and one recognition. The one proclamation designating July as National Parks and Recreation Month, I would like to ask Vice Mayor Hutton to read the proclamation, and Mr. Taylor Harmon, one of our recreation programmers, is here, I believe, to accept.
This proclamation designates July 2023 Parks and Recreation Month, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Bristol, Tennessee; and whereas parks and recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks; and whereas parks and recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's; and whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles; and whereas parks and recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education; and whereas parks and recreation programming and educational activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development; and whereas parks and recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, crime reduction, and is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; whereas parks and recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month; and whereas the city of Bristol, Tennessee, recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee hereby proclaims July 2023 as Park and Recreation Month, this 11th day of July 2023.
So, first off, I do want to thank the mayor and council for your continued support for our Parks and Recreation events. It really is a pleasure to see you all out and about and coming to our events that we hold, whether at downtown or at Steel Creek Park. It really is nice to see you all. Since 1985, Parks and Recreation Month has been celebrated in July to promote building strong communities through the power of Parks and Recreation. This month is also to recognize the more than 160,000 full-time Parks and Recreation employees, along with the hundreds of thousands of part-time and seasonal employees across the United States. These people help to maintain our local, state, and community parks. The services that park and recreation professionals provide are vital for our communities, and this month we encourage everyone to get out and enjoy our local parks. Take a paddleboat ride at Steel Creek, take in a concert downtown, go enjoy a stroll through our incredible nature center, or maybe just take a walk around White Top Creek Park. And while you're out, pay attention to all the men and women that are out there making these things happen. Thank you again for your support of our Parks and Recreation Department here in Bristol, Tennessee, and we all look forward to working together with all the exciting developments and programs that we have coming up in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have one item of recognition on our agenda this evening. The city has over 350 full- and part-time employees that serve the community on a daily basis. We frequently hear of employees that go above and beyond in their service. To that end, the Bristol First program has been developed to recognize their efforts. Tonight, we honor our recipient, the Bristol First Award. I'd like to invite Ms. Ann Dunham up with our Community Relations Department to the podium and give us a brief overview of the program and announce the Bristol First Award.
Thank you, Mayor. Bristol is a community that supports and appreciates its police department, but we all know that didn't happen by accident. The leadership provided by Chief Matt Austin and his command staff, coupled with the professionalism of every officer who wears the department's badge, contributes to the quality of life we all enjoy. Tonight's nomination is a shining example of that professionalism. On June 22nd, police responded to reports of a disturbance at Family Promise, an organization committed to serving the homeless and low income. According to the nomination submitted by staff member Larissa Copley, a woman at the facility was yelling loudly and acting erratically. Staff members there worried that the incident would continue to escalate and someone would eventually get hurt. Officers Mike Overbay, Dylan Waddell, and Mike Carlson responded, and Officer Carlson immediately took charge. He recognized that the woman causing the disturbance needed mental health assistance, and rather than becoming aggressive, handled the situation with patience and a high degree of concern for the offender. While she continued to shout insults and disrespectful comments toward him and others in the vicinity, he remained calm and engaged her in conversation until an ambulance arrived to transport her to the hospital. As Ms. Copley noted in her nomination, Officer Carlson exhibits a genuine care for the people he serves, and he exemplified this by providing the woman an option to seek professional mental health help rather than go immediately to jail. Before joining the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department, Officer Carlson served our nation in the United States Marine Corps, spending time in Jordan and Kosovo while on active duty, and completing an eight-month deployment to the Middle East as reservist. He also holds a bachelor's degree from East Tennessee State University. He began his law enforcement career in the patrol division in 2006, but was assigned to the Community Policing Division last year, and now wrecks up five miles or more each day patrolling State Street and surrounding areas on foot. There, he serves our community by providing a police presence in the downtown, talking to merchants, residents, and visitors as he makes his daily rounds. He also serves as a member of the SWAT team and as a training officer, forging relationships with state and federal agencies to bring highly specialized training to our department, often at no cost to taxpayers. I should also point out that Officer Carlson is a good friend to our department, Community Relations, often stopping to check on us in our downtown office space and taking time to introduce us to those who are new to the downtown area. As you know, the Bristol First Award was created in 2014 to recognize city employees who provide exceptional service. Officer Carlson's leadership on June 22nd, his outstanding and courteous response in this emergency situation, and his efforts to improve relations between the public and those we serve is commendable. For all of these reasons, it's my pleasure tonight to present Bristol's First Award to Officer Mike Carlson.
I'm just gonna say thank you all, because I don't have a lot to say usually.
Okay, we have no presentations on tonight's agenda, so I guess we'll move to our Board of Education report. Dr. Teter?
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. I just have a summer school update and then a back-to-school update for you this evening. We concluded summer school the end of June. We actually have a few students who are doing some makeup days this week at Haynesfield, but other than that, we are concluded. I wanted to let you know that we had, in total, we have about, in the 2223 school year, we have about 275 third-grade students. Zero of them will be retained this year because of the law, the retention law. They've all either met the requirement through attending summer school or will participate in tutoring this coming school year in fourth grade. If they are retained, it's a joint decision between families, not because they didn't meet the law, so we're very pleased with that. I'll also add to that that those students, of those that participated in summer school this year, we had 57 third graders in that group. Not all of them had to attend summer school. I think about 40 or 41 were required to attend summer school because of the legal requirements, but 88% of our third graders made gains from the pre-to-post test, so very pleased with their progress in summer school and pleased with what our educators did in summer school to prepare those students for that. Overall, we had about 350 students attending summer school every day at the elementary level. Our K-5 had an increase of almost 6% compared to last year, so participation has certainly increased. It is definitely not just a fun summer program anymore. It really is a continuation of the school year, so I can, as you can imagine, they're pretty serious about math and reading in particular in the morning. However, they, our staff, go out of their way to make sure they have engaging opportunities and activities that they participate in. Each week of the summer program, it's a four-week summer program, had a different theme. They took field trips to Bays Mountain, the Creation Kingdom Zoo, Wetlands, Interstate Bowl, Legacy Theater. The last day, they loaded up a bus and went to Barnes &amp; Noble, and were given money and were able to purchase books that they picked out and are able to take those home and add those to their home library, so very successful elementary summer program. During the first week of camp, we even had our baseball and softball programs participate with kids who stayed in the after-care program, so that they got some great opportunities to mingle with our high school students. We also had visiting author Stan Tucker. He was, he participated with us this past school year. He helped in summer school. He has a special story. He shared his story and then encouraged students to share their story, and they all got a blank book where they wrote their stories throughout the summer, through the four weeks of that, and they are encouraged to actually submit that for publication, and Stan Tucker's gonna pick one of those and actually publish that book, so a pretty amazing experience for our students. He is going to be our guest speaker for our back-to-school in-service that's happening in a few weeks. In total, we had 109 staff members who participated in summer programming, and that's probably about 20% of our staff overall, so pretty significant that that number of teachers and support staff also devote a whole month of their summer to continuing education for our students. Finally, just back-to-school dates. We're only a few weeks away, if you can believe it, from the start of school, so July 31st, our teachers return. That's our back-to-school district in-service. Then we'll have two more days of in-service and a workday. Friday is the first abbreviated day. That's just two hours where students come and meet their teachers, and we also determine if an additional teacher is needed based on who shows up on that first day, and then the following week is the first full day on Tuesday, August 8th. So it's been a short summer. Thank you.
That's fallen by.
It really has. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a public hearing on tonight's agenda regarding ordinance 23-8. The public hearing is hereby open for ordinance 23-8 amending the city zoning ordinance to change the uses permitted by right in the B-3 general business, M-1 light industrial business, and M-2 general industrial zones, and to make other changes clarifying the purpose of such zones. Ms. Sherif Young is here to go over this with us.
Thank you, Mayor Turner, and good evening, council members. I'll be brief in my presentation tonight since we've gone through the details of this one in the work session and then at first reading, and I'll just give you all a two-slide summary here. One first slide here is summary of the changes in the ordinance itself, and then a second slide just to summarize the process thus far. So just a quick summary of the changes in this ordinance that will amend both the B-3, the M-1, and the M-2 districts. The first item is there will be some uses that are removed entirely from the B-3 district. Those uses are cardboard box manufacturing, car washes, flammable liquid storage, machine shops, and milk distribution stations. We will add the following uses to the M-1 district: car washes, cardboard box manufacturing, and self-storage unit facilities. We'll add self-storage unit facilities to the M-2 district. And then, if you recall, we presented some cleaned up, more concise introductory purpose statements for each of the industrial districts as part of this ordinance revision. Just a quick summary of the history of the ordinance. The Planning Commission worked on this for several months, but at their meeting on May 15th, they did vote to send favorable recommendation on the ordinance that staff had proposed and drafted for the Planning Commission review. The one addition that the Planning Commission did add, they did make an amendment to that to also remove car washes as a permitted use in the B-3 zone. On June 7th, city council heard this item for first reading. City council voted to approve at first reading, but asked to strike what was item E in the ordinance, which was the item that related to the manufacturing uses and that 25,000-square-foot cap. They asked for Planning Commission to continue working on that, and we will continue to do so. As that was a substantial change to the ordinance, we did report back to Planning Commission on the change on June 19th, and on June 19th, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to accept the severance of item E as decided by city council from ordinance 23-8. So we have advertised this for public hearing tonight, and I will be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Do you have any questions? Okay, would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Next, we have our appearance of citizens, but I do not believe, no one signed up, but is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak? All right. Seeing none, we will go to our appointments. We have numerous appointments this evening. The first one we have is for the Better Property Board, and we have one appointment to be made with the term running through June 30th, 2026. There are two candidates, Pamela Offield and Noah Rosabom, to fill the seat. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
So Mayor Turner, Pamela Offield, Vice Mayor Hutton, Pamela Offield, Councilwoman Powers, Pamela Offield, and Councilman Luttrell, Pamela Offield.
Thank you for putting in your name. Next, we have the Board of Code and Appeals, which is one appointment, term ending June 30th, 2028. There is one candidate, Steve Willinger, who would like to speak on behalf of... Would you like to speak on behalf of Mr. Willinger?
I'll just say that, you know, Steve has been very engaged in a lot of our boards and commissions, and I think he does a wonderful job. And, you know, he's very concerned with the way things go and the way things look in our community, and I think he'll continue doing a great job. He always has been.
For this, we have Councilwoman Luttrell, Stephen Willinger, Mayor Turner, Stephen Willinger, Councilwoman Powers, Stephen Willinger, and Vice Mayor Hutton, Stephen Willinger.
Good. Thank you. Next, we have one appointment for the Parks and Recreation Commission, ending June 30th, 2026. There is one candidate, Cade Parks. Would you like to speak? I'll say I have spoken with Mr. Parks, actually, I guess twice today or yesterday, or I guess it was today, but I think he'll be a great addition to our Parks and Recreation.
For Park and Recreation Commission, Cade Parks by Mayor Turner, Cade Parks by Vice Mayor Hutton, Cade Parks by Councilwoman Powers, and Cade Parks by Councilman Luttrell.
Thank you. Next, we have three appointments to the Planning Commission, all for the positions that end June 30th, 2026. The first is for the Urban Growth Area Representative. For this position, we have one candidate, Takai Shu. There are five candidates for the remaining two positions. These candidates are Jason Brewer, Refugio Leclerc, Noah Rosenbaum, Matt Slagle, and Joel Staton. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of them, these candidates?
I'll just say that, you know, all the candidates that have applied, I think we do a great job. And, you know, sometimes you go back and reevaluate where you're at, and sometimes you end up where you are. So, but anyway, I think we'll all do a great job.
Just one. I mean, it's just one. Just get the one.
I think we'll start with the Urban Growth Area nomination, and that's Takai Shu. So, Councilwoman Powers has Takai Shu, Vice Mayor Hutton has Takai Shu, Mayor Turner has Takai Shu, and Councilman Luttrell has Takai Shu. And then for the other two positions, Councilman Luttrell has Jason Brewer and Joel Staton. Mayor Turner has Jason Brewer and Matt Slagle. Vice Mayor Hutton has Jason Brewer and Matt Slagle. And Councilwoman Powers has Jason Brewer and Matt Slagle.
Thank you. Next, we have...
I'm sorry. Just Danielle ran the number. So, it's Jason Brewer and Matt Slagle that were...
Okay.
And Takai, yes.
Okay. Next, we have one appointment for the Power Board, term ending June 30th, 2027. There's one candidate, Doug Harmon, for this position. If anyone would like to... I will say I've served with Doug now for three, four years, and is very engaged with the board and does a good job.
And I just would like to say we appreciate your willingness to serve again.
So, for the Power Board, Councilman Luttrell has Doug Harmon, Mayor Turner has Doug Harmon, Vice Mayor Hutton has Doug Harmon, and Councilwoman Powers has Doug Harmon.
Okay, next, we have one position for the Tree Board, ending June 30th, 2027. There's one candidate, Karen McSherry, for this position. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of her?
I think she's been serving on this for a while, and I think she'll continue doing a great job.
We appreciate her being willing to serve again.
Okay, so the Tree Board, Councilman Luttrell has Karen McSherry, Councilwoman Powers has Karen McSherry, Vice Mayor Hutton has Karen McSherry, and Mayor Turner has Karen McSherry.
All right, we have no ordinances on first reading. We do have an ordinance on second reading tonight. Ordinance 23-8, an ordinance amend the zoning ordinance to change the uses permitted by right in B-3 general business, M-1 light industrial business, and M-2 general industrial zones, and to make other changes clarifying the purpose of each zone. This item was presented by Ms. Young earlier in the meeting during the public hearing. Does any member of council have questions regarding this item or taking action? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 23-8.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would any member of council like to discuss this?
I think a good bit of time has been spent on this by our planning staff and Planning Commission, and I think with the exclusion of 23-8E, we are in a much better position.
All right, the public had an opportunity to comment on this issue during the public hearing, so I believe we're ready for a vote, Mary Lee.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Okay, next is ordinance 23-9, an ordinance to amend Chapter 82 of the Code of Ordinances as it relates to taxicabs. City Attorney Smith, would, could you please summarize us on this item?
Yes, Mayor. As we discussed at last month's City Council meeting, the taxicab ordinance has not been amended since 1980, and we were approached by a citizen who has some interest in opening a taxicab company in Bristol, and that citizen had some suggestions that the police department and I listened to and, you know, came to counsel with. A lot of these are cleanup changes, but some things that we did that I should point out are that we have removed the requirement that the taxi have a taximeter in favor of allowing them to have any mechanical or electronic device that is designed to accurately measure distance traveled and time in service. We would make explicit the requirement that the driver have a valid state driver's license to get a taxicab driver's permit from the city. We would require a background check be submitted with the application for a taxicab driver's permit. We would revise definitions of taxicabs so that it conforms with Tennessee law, and it makes clear that a taxicab doesn't include a vehicle that's being operated in connection with a transportation network company such as Uber or Lyft. We're not attempting to regulate those companies or those drivers. We'd provide a complaint process, and we'd provide an appeal process so that the... If the chief of police in responding to a complaint revoked a permit or suspended a permit, that the taxicab holder, the driver or the permit holder would be able to appeal to the city manager for, to see if that decision could be reviewed. One thing that we had discussed was setting rates, and City Council expressed the opinion that they did not really want to be responsible for setting rates. They wanted the market to be able to determine that. So, the new ordinance would not require City Council to set rates. You'd have the option, but not the obligation, to set rates for taxicabs.
Is there a motion to take action on this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion. Would anyone like to discuss this?
We need Ubers, Lifts, cabs. We have more and more people coming, wanting to get out and about in the evenings and throughout the day, and I'm glad that this action's being initiated so that we can perhaps get some of these elements in place.
Absolutely. I agree. Mary Lee, I think we're ready for a vote.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have Resolution 23-93 authorizing entry into an agreement for engineering and design services with Madder and Craig related to upgrades at White Top Creek Park. Mr. Napier, would you give us a brief overview of the agreement, please?
This agreement, if approved or not, would set us up to begin working with Madder and Craig on designing a championship-level baseball stadium on one of the existing fields at White Top Creek Park, as well as grading on one of the other fields. Basically, this contract will take us from the initial overview of the site, survey, through planning, design of the buildings, design of the fields and all the components, through bidding, and through construction to make sure that the construction does meet the plan as it's designed.
Does anyone have any questions for staff?
I make a motion that we approve this on ordinance or whatever. Yeah.
Resolution.
Resolution 23-93.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Would any member of council like to discuss this?
I think just for clarification, that we are entering into this so that we can do the conceptuals and have engineering and design begin to take place while we continue to work through the fine details with all of our partners, and the work that will be initiated is work that is necessary in general and will help to facilitate this project being on such a short timeline. So, it's important that we take this action this evening so that we can get this in motion and get our fields to their very best level to be played upon.
Anyone else? Okay, I believe, Mary Lee, we're ready for a vote.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, this brings us to the Consent Agenda. Ms. Bourgeois?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. First item is minutes of the June 5th, 2023 City Council Called Work Session. Next is the minutes of the June 6th, 2023 City Council Meeting, the minutes of the June 13th, 2023 City Council Called Meeting, approval of minutes of the June 27th, 2023 City Council Work Session, approval of Resolution 23-60 approving an agreement with Abuse Alternatives, Inc. for funding support, approving Resolution 23-61 approving an agreement with Believe in Bristol, Inc. for funding support, Resolution 23-62 authorizing an appropriation agreement with the Birthplace of Country Music, Inc. for funding support, approving Resolution 23-63 authorizing an appropriation agreement with the Bristol Chamber of Commerce for program support in fiscal year 24, approving Resolution 23-64 authorizing an appropriation agreement with the Bristol Regional Speech and Hearing Center for funding support in FY '24, approval of Resolution 23-65 authorizing an appropriation agreement with the Bristol Regional Tourism Marketing Corporation as Explore Bristol for fiscal year 2024, approval of Resolution 23-66 authorizing an appropriation agreement with Family Promise of Bristol, approval of Resolution 23-67 authorizing an appropriation agreement with the Paramount Foundation, Inc., Paramount Center for the Arts, approving Resolution 23-68 authorizing an appropriation agreement with the Sullivan County Family Justice Center or the Branch House, approving Resolution 23-69 authorizing an appropriation agreement with Theater Bristol, approving Resolution 23-70 awarding a bid for the purchase of highway paint and pavement markings, approval of Resolution 23-71 awarding a bid for the purchase of stone and sand, both delivered and picked up, approval of Resolution 23-72 awarding a bid for the purchase of in-place asphalt, approving Resolution 23-73 awarding a bid for the purchase of bulk asphalt products, approving Resolution 23-74 awarding a bid for the purchase of bulk concrete products, approving Resolution 23-75 awarding bids for the purchase of bulk water and sewer supplies, approving Resolution 23-76 awarding a bid for the purchase of bulk highway sand, approving Resolution 23-77 authorizing the purchase of software support for the financial software system, approving Resolution 23-78 authorizing payment to Troutman Pepper Sanders for legal fees, approving Resolution 23-79 authorizing purchase of road barriers, approving Resolution 23-80 authorizing entry into the agreement for leak detection, excuse me, a leak detection study, approving Resolution 23-81 authorizing entry into an agreement with First Tennessee Development District for Administration of the Home ARP Funds, approval of Resolution 23-82 authorizing emergency repair of Fire Department Quint III motor, approval of Resolution 23-83 authorizing the motor replacement in the automated side-loading refuse truck, approval of Resolution 23-84 approving a grant agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation for the utilization of Federal Highway Administration funds for the Bristol MPO for fiscal year '24, approval of Resolution 23-85 authorizing renewal of the Network Security Monitoring Service, approval of Resolution 23-86 authorizing entry into a service agreement with Nihart Company for actuarial valuation and other post-employment benefits, approval of Resolution 23-87 authorizing the purchase of the pickup truck for the Police Department Animal Control Vehicle under the state contract, approval of Resolution 23-88 authorizing the purchase of Ford Explorers for the Police Department, also under the state contract, approval of Resolution 23-89 approving a right-of-way access agreement with LMK Communications, Doing Businesses Segra, approval of Resolution 23-90 authorizing the purchase of field reporting software support, approval of Resolution 23-91 authorizing the purchase of software support for computer-aided dispatch system, approval of Resolution 23-92 authorizing the replacement of the HVAC unit for Emergency Communications 911, and approval of Resolution 23-94 approving a grant application and associated contract documents for the Multimodal Access Grant Program.
It's a lot.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I was gonna ask you, does any member of council want anything removed from the consent? All right, so we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mary Lee?
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next, we have our City Managers' Report.
Great, thank you. Just a number of calendar items to go over tonight. Sounds of Summer, we have Hollow Ground actually playing right now. Slick Cadillac this Thursday at 7:00, both of those downtown. And then, exciting meeting tomorrow with the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development Commissioner, Stuart McWharton. That's at 2:30 at Partnership Park for an announcement. We have, based on the agreement that was approved tonight and moving our White Top Creek Park project forward, that groundbreaking celebration will be next Wednesday, July 19th at 11:00 out at the park. And then, just a reminder that our work session for July 25th will be at 4:00 p.m., and we'll be talking about our Shelby Street property at that meeting.
Okay, is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, City Council comments?
I'll, y'all, be quick. If you haven't seen the new stage at the Downtown Center, you need to go by and see it. It's pretty awesome. And it's great. Tomorrow's announcement at PP2 is big. It's really big. And our staff has worked incredibly hard with our regional staff, saw the networks partnership, Lynn Tully with the State of Tennessee. And if the commissioner's coming, you know it's a big announcement. So, our economic development team is always leading the charge. We also have to compliment all of our departments because they all work together to make these things happen. If you missed the Fourth of July celebration in downtown Bristol, you missed it. It was probably, if not the best, one of the very best events that we've ever had in downtown Bristol with the folks out and about numbering well beyond 15,000 to 20,000. It's hard to count. There were people on State Street. There were people sitting out on the Parkway, Anderson Street, MLK, Cumberland. They were everywhere. It was a great, great effort by both Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia, along with Believe in Bristol. As you can tell, we've got a lot going on. When Ms. Bourgeois was interviewed, she said, "All the pieces are here. It's just a matter of getting the lift to those pieces." And we're beginning to see that lift, so I would encourage you to stay tuned, stay engaged, stay involved because there are some big lifts fixing to be made in Bristol.
I would echo what Councilwoman Powers said about the Fourth of July. It was fantastic, and our city staff did an amazing, amazing job. So, that was really, it was fantastic to see so many people all over downtown Bristol, and it was just... And even in the parking lot where I was... and it was just, and even in the parking lot where I was sitting with my family, there were folks from Kingsport who were driven up because of the Tri-Cities. This is the best of the Tri-Cities. So, it was just really fantastic to see. So, I want to say thanks to all the folks who made that possible. Thank you.
I'll just say that if you were lucky enough to have a seat that night, you better not have gotten up and moved because it was gone.
Yeah.
Good job, everyone.
Yeah, great job. All right, I don't have anything, so we're adjourned.